The regular meeting of City Council for order. January twenty third, two thousand twenty three, at seven oh two P M. I would like to recognize that we are a thirty five territory, traditional territory of the United States of Korea and of the May key, and that we are all thirty people. Thank you. Next, I would like to call for approval of the agenda. Deputy Mayor Valentino, Councillor Fitzpatrick, all in favor. Carry. Extra going to community comments and feedback. And if there's any comments, state your name and address and we'll go. Second time, any community comments or feedback. Third and final time, you'll be called back regarding today's meeting. Seeing none, thank you. Number five is adoption of minutes five point one is for the regular meeting of council, January ninth, two thousand and twenty two. Resolution two zero two three zero one two, moved by Councillor Fitzpatrick, second by Councillor Chong. Here resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Monday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty three, be adopted as circulated. Administration?
Nothing further.
Councillor Fitzpatrick, any comments? Council? Seeing none, called to the question, all those in favor. Carry. Point two is adoption minister committee of the whole, January sixteen, two thousand and twenty three. Resolution two zero two three zero one three, moved by Councillor Wong. Councillor Landmark, here resolved that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Monday, January eighteen, two thousand and twenty three, be adopted as circulated. Administration?
Nothing further.
Councillor Wong? Any other counsel comments? Seeing none, called to the question, all those in favor. Carry. We're now going to go into resolutions. Six point one is a resolution to approve the extension of the Manitoba Air Services Branch land lease agreement for lot two plan five oh nine four P L T O North Division. Resolution two zero two three zero one four, moved by Councillor Fitzpatrick, second by Councillor Chong. Whereas on April eleventh, two thousand twenty two, council passed reservation two zero two one one six two, approving to extend the terms of the lease agreement for one year between the city of Thompson and Manitoba Air Services Branch for lot two plan number five oh nine four P L T O North Division, consisting of two hundred and fifty thousand eleven square feet. And whereas Manitoba Air Services Branch has requested to extend the term of the subject lease for a further one year commencing October first, two thousand twenty two, and expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty three. And whereas the cost of the lease fee is five thousand and thirty six dollars pursuant to the top city of Thompson's annual fee and fine schedule. Now therefore, here is all the council extend the term of the subject lease to a further one year commencing October first, two thousand twenty two, and expiring September thirtieth, two thousand twenty three, for lot two plan five oh nine four K L T O North Division, Manitoba Air Services Branch. Administration?
Yes, good evening, council. Uh, Manitoba Air Services Branch has occupied this piece of property since the nineteen seventies. Uh, they have multi-year leases in the past. Uh, back in twenty fifteen, they had a multi-year that ended in twenty fifteen, and since then, uh, their request has been annual lease agreements going forward. So as per the resolution, this is a one-year lease from October first, twenty two to September thirtieth, twenty three, at our outstanding rate of five thousand thirty six dollars.
Thank you. Patrick is a mover, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, I'm in favor, just as if that what this while said, they've had their multi-year lease in the past, and it does give them time to remediate the area, which is in it's good for the environment.
Thank you. Any other counselor comments? Councillor Holbert?
Any of those couple questions, thank you. Uh, any update on the dream up there?
They're working on the budget and scope of work for the summer, I don't have anything for them at this time, uh, other than they are working towards it.
Okay, yeah.
And I believe you've indicated that the crane has been moved.
Yeah, so previously the crane had been moved, the power had been touched to the site, and they are looking at, uh, the core actually, the core from the to lot four site, all of that has been moved out and moved to another government, uh, facility. So they're basically now we're just working on the scope of what to, what they can get done for the summer.
Second question, uh, is five thousand thirty six dollars a month? How much increase is that from last year?
Five thousand thirty six for the year? That is the same rate as last year, so our lease rates are determined our fees and fines, because the fees and fines stayed, uh, same for previous year, there was no increase on that.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, due to the, we had a zero percent tax increase, so fees and fines did not bother. Okay.
Yeah, that's all I was gonna say is council last year decided not to install the fees and fines, therefore this lease rate stays the same.
Any other comments? Call for the question, all those in favor? Carry. Six point two is a resolution authorizing administration to repress Manitoba Water Services Board provide project management services for the water treatment plant generator. Resolution two zero two three zero one five, moved by Deputy Mayor Valentino, seconded by Councillor Oberdorfer. Whereas the Manitoba Services Board has approved funding for a city of Thompson water treatment plant generator project for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or fifty percent of a ten to seven hundred thousand dollars for the project. And whereas the city of Thompson is requesting the Manitoba Water Services Board provide full project management services, including retaining the consultant to complete the design tendering contract administration and paying all project costs to the water treatment plant generator project. Now therefore, be it resolved that council founder requests that the Manitoba Water Services Board provide full project management service, including retaining the consultant to complete design, tendering, contract administration, and paying all projects for the water treatment plant generator. Administration?
Yeah, good evening again, uh, so this memo was put together myself and Clarence from Public Works. So, uh, in twenty twenty two, Manitoba Services Board, but called the capital projects, uh, the city submitted this project forward, uh, we received word in January by email that this is attached to the memo that we have been, uh, accepted for the project, and they will cover us, as was said, fifty percent of any seven hundred thousand dollar estimated projects, and unfortunately it's bigger fifty, as well as they will provide bits of project management, tendering, uh, oversight. Uh, that to answer a question, Councillor Reeves last night, that those fees are contained within that seven hundred, and those fees are also eligible for cost sharing. So basically those would not have to be extra fees that we were paid for on top of the project, it would all be part of the cost of seven hundred thousand. So as per the metal, uh, Manitoba Water Service Board requires a resolution from the council to, to go into this.
Thank you, uh, Councillor, Deputy Mayor Valentino, as a mover, do you have any?
Honored, thank you, Mayor Smith, uh, obviously I'm gonna be supporting this tonight, and to reiterate a little bit of what, uh, Mr. France has said is this was a project from the previous council, so this is really approving the funding now that's been given to us of fifty percent to, to the three hundred fifty thousand. A little bit of back history was when, uh, this camp, or not this with previous council, working with Valley and taking over the water treatment plant approximately seven years ago. So this was already identified then as a need that would arise or be something that would be beneficial to the the continued function of our water treatment plant in the event of a power outage. So with questions and discussion and comments and explanation to council, I'm confident in supporting this tonight, thank you.
Okay, uh, glad.
Sorry, I, there's one thing I forgot to mention is for the metal, the money to the city's portion of the money, the, the three hundred fifty thousand in this portion was already approved and isn't contained within the budget from required councils, is it not a, I mean, budget item? That money has already been budgeted and approved for this project. Sorry, I forgot to mention that earlier.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Chong?
Okay. Uh, these seven hundred thousand dollars, which is estimated cost, what happened if the cost to build is more than seven hundred thousand dollars? Are they still considered to speak fifty percent or of the city of the big water, the rest of the, the cost more like?
Yeah, or actually.
Right now the approvals for a project cost of seven hundred, uh, seven hundred thousand only. If the projection comes, the way the process works, that the projection comes and it's gonna cost more, that would have to come to council for a decision if we'd like to proceed or not. At that time, we could also ask a province for additional, but there's no guarantee that we can receive that. So right now it's really based on this is the base budget or what's estimated. Anything beyond that, we'd have to have discussions, or council at that time would have to say, no, we don't want to proceed at this time.
Then do we still consider about, when you have installed something down there, you probably have to do maintenance? And do we have the budget for somebody to go after this equipment?
Um, the number of other generators that we have, council maintains a service, um, we call it a maintenance agreement, so we have a maintenance agreement of, uh, a company that comes up and tests and checks the generators on a, I think, twice or four times a year um, for all the others, so council would have to add this generator to that yearly budget, so there would be added cost for maintenance, as well as there'd be the preventative maintenance done in house. Um, that would be added as part of the regular routine as they're checking all the other generators. So yes, uh, with any new piece of infrastructure, there's always a new maintenance cost allowance that has to be made for it.
Okay, thank you.
Also, Wong?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, my question is, so we had some discussion prior to this, uh, it came this question to my mind now about the remaining untreated raw water in the reservoir. How many gallon left that we need to finish up the process? To require the generator when we have let, let me rephrase this, when the, uh, the pump house won't have power to pump the water to fit the uh, water treatment plant. So this generator will help to continue to process whatever remaining in the reservoir, which is untreated, to finish up the work, to, to, to prevent all the chaos later on. How long that can last for that?
So just for clarity, everything in the reservoir is already treated, so the word reservoir would be used.
Oh, sorry, the well, untreated.
Untreated, uh, that's a bit of a crap shoot, you wouldn't know, so it's depending on what phase the process of the plant is in when the power goes out. If it happened to be that they're all filled, I, we don't have the, I don't have the gallons, I mean, heck, heck, so if, if you locked up and they were all filled to capacity, yes, you could probably refill your reservoir. Um, I understand what you're saying is.
I, I shouldn't say it's a reservoir, the reservoir is retreated.
Yes.
The untreated well, the wa, the water go to the well one, well two, well three.
We would never know because they're all running different sequences.
Okay, so how much water that remain in there that to need to be finished up the whole process? By, I needed the generator.
I couldn't tell you on the top of my head.
Will it be between the two days or less than a day that all the water will be treated and refilled into the reservoir?
I, we couldn't give you that number of gallons, the point was that any of the water that's already in process, you could salvage and continue to treat, as well as prevent all the other upsets and other things that we just passed.
And I can tell you that, the reason I pointed out is like i, i, in the disaster work, let's say the pump house cannot feed the raw water to the to the water treatment plant. And we, the reason we have the, the, the generator to install to prevent all the shortage and continue, we can finish up the untreated water, make it through, uh, treated water, and we can continue pumping to the sea. So now, if let's say more than forty eight hours, according to the Valley report, the reservoir can be feed more than forty eight hours for supply the water to the sea. So in forty eight hours, if there's still no water coming in, so those un, un, untreated water in the, in the well will be used up. So there will be empty, so what will be happen after that? So we don't know, so even though we try to prevent all that happen, it's still no supply going in, so my point is to me at this moment when I look at it, if in the perfect disaster work, it's pointless to have because you have no water supply to the, to the, the new untreated water supply to the water treatment plant. Continue the process, whatever we worry about is gonna be used up anyway. So that is the concern I have, unless Valley willing to put a backup generator for the pump, so we can continue pumping the water from the river to continue the process so without interruption, then would be worth it to have a pump, uh, generator, otherwise I think we try to protect one building only in the whole entire city, the rest is we don't have power to use it, if that is the worst case scenario. But I don't think so, in the record of Manitoba Hydro, between three to four hours that we stole everything, that's, that's my I think the money is not well spent, in my opinion, and, uh, I know a lot of people who support this because of the fear factor. To me, I think it's about due diligence, about knowledge, so I will ask for a reportable, thank you.
Excellent, uh, Anthony.
Uh, the proper approach when looking at any water system is from the source all the way to someone's tap, and then you have to look at the wastewater on the other side. So the proper way to do it is to have those redundancies at each stage from the pump house, after water treatment, distribution, collection throughout, so yes, you have to build it out in phases, this would be one of the phases to get something at the water plant. Then if there is a disaster, the power did go down for an extended period, instead of the city asking Manitoba Hydro to provide two emergency generators, one to pump, one to run the water treatment plant, we could rely on our one at the water treatment plant, you're only asking for Manitoba Hydro in a disaster situation to provide one. That doesn't mean that we cannot also have ongoing talks, uh, Valet on building redundancies on their side of the system. So it's, it's important to look at the whole picture of what's going on. We've seen, yes, we've been very lucky in Thompson in terms of emergencies, disasters, usually we have power within hours at the longest, but we've also seen when there was the snow, uh, events that happened down in Asher, I believe certain places have lost power for days. And in that case, if we have some sort of backups, we could continue to keep some of that water moving. We do have the backup generation, so we continue to treat wastewater, and we have to work out a few other places in our wastewater plant too, that also require backup power. But it's really looking at building over redundancies throughout our entire system, it's not affordable to do them all at once, so do them one at a time, add it on and build your redundancy, so at the end of the day, you have a robust so that would just be my advice to council, yes, the whole thing isn't solved, you don't own the pump house, but this is another step in building our system to be saving.
Hi, anybody else? Hi.
We was with the city planning this and installing a generator for the water treatment plant. I'm sure discussions with Valley will be a lot better, we say that we can make water as long as you can provide us water, and sure that it'd be reasonable, you know, sure. They have, because I'm pretty sure they have to stop operations if they have the wrong water, which is, uh, what's the plan, so might be something that, that they can go, what we do, we're doing our to go, so, uh, we support this.
Thank you, um, um, I don't know which one was first. I'll go first. Well, let's not fight over it, that makes decisions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, go back to Deputy Mayor Valentino's point that we're not voting on approving the project tonight, we're voting on whether or not we're going to accept, uh, this agreement from the province to provide us with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so I will be in support of us accepting that provincial agreement to accept those funds and allow administration to look into the project further and bring it forward if there is any concern with it being um, outside of what was previously approved, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Fitzpatrick.
Uh, just to touch on, uh, Councillor Landmark's, uh, comments, there, uh, that it doesn't require a bottle of water anymore for their operations, it just need water.
Yep, thank you. Councillor MacArthur, a hidden issue? No, oh, no, I didn't know. Councillor Wong?
Thank you, I'm gonna go for a second round, uh, last meeting I pointed out this typo, and it still happened here, I wonder if I'm, uh, corrected the typo, that it's still the same ways we want to treat it.
So, that's, if, the, the set basically means that the estimate was based on the cost to build what I always want to shoot, but that's what the seven hundred thousand already. That's why the city needs water shooting, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I just would like to guess put my two cents worth in, I will definitely be supporting this. Uh, to me, one of the big parts is the communication and the fact that, yes, we have up to forty eight hours water, but it's very important to know that we're not going to lose the communication system, uh, for our period of twelve to sixteen hours to get it up and running. I can pretty much guarantee you, if we know for forty eight hours that's all the water, there's gonna be some kind of generation, generator brought into that pump house in order for it to pump water to us and to Valet, so I'm pretty confident that if we have this uh, part of the puzzle there, that it will definitely be supported by water coming from the river one way or another when the time comes should it be done. And that still doesn't mean we still pursue, uh, with, you know, Valet, uh, so their plans on this, but thank you everybody for your comments, uh, with that we'll call to the question, all those in a recorded vote, as per Councillor Wong. Open the question, all those in favor? Councillor Oberdorfer, Councillor Landmark, Councillor Holbert, Mayor Smith, Councillor Valentino, Councillor MacArthur, Councillor Fitzpatrick opposed, Councillor Wong and Councillor Chong is carried, thank you. Six point three is a resolution to declare Winterfest a special event in the city of Thompson.
So this is the annual request that we receive from Winterfest.
To read my reading, sorry, go on. Us, resolution two zero two three zero one six, moved by Councillor, seconded by Councillor Landmark. Whereas the Winterfest Committee has applied for special event status for Winterfest twenty twenty three. Now therefore be it resolved that Winterfest twenty twenty three be declared a special event in Thompson from February twenty fourth to twenty February twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. Administration?
Okay, uh, so this is an annual request that we received on Winterfest, which is a, a community event, a city-run event, uh, there requires council resolution to grant special event status, um, and to leave the five hundred sixteen dollar fee, um, that goes on special event. Um, so to ensure that any vendors that actually are taking or sell their goods at Winterfest will, they'll be on a, like, you know, they will require their own separate, uh, permits or license. Or a resolution, maybe it's a, is a, we, we.
Thank you. Uh, Councillor MacArthur is the mover, do you have any comments?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, with the festivals, the twenty fourth to twenty sixth, they did where they existed in specific phase, they will is that already planned out what's gonna happen, like what kind of events or what kind?
Uh, they do have a tentative schedule, um, that maybe meets every Wednesday at one thirty, so there's still, they they're still working on it, but they do have a really good plan right now, uh, starting to post it as they get the events confirmed, and then the decisions happen.
Yeah, I'm ready to give you.
I think you have the, uh, cheers again, the most sorry now, this is the, very busy boarder. Every Wednesday.
And I know they've been very excited because this is one of the largest turnouts for finding events, but we've had many years of yours. It'd be a very exciting winter fest weekend. Thank you. Anyone else? Comments? Okay. Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor. Carry. Yeah. Six point four on the agenda is a resolution authorizing administration to enter into a four-year Q R C C concession agreement before July. Yes.
I, uh, being here over in Gulfstream Lodge, I confused myself with this.
Thank you. Please note, Councillor Holbert is leaving your room. Can you shut the door on your way out?
Isn't that wild, Jim?
Thank you. Six point four is a resolution two zero two three zero one seven, moved by Councillor MacArthur, accepted by Councillor Fitzpatrick. Whereas an expression of interest to operate a concession in the Thompson Regional Community Center was advertised to the public with the closing date of December twentieth, two thousand twenty two, and the city of Thompson was in receipt of two acclamation. And whereas council authorized administration to enter into discussion with Old Trail Lodge two zero zero three limited and develop a lease agreement for concession stand at the Thompson Regional Community Center. And whereas the agreement is for the duration of four years. Now therefore be it resolved that council approved entering into a four-year lease agreement between the city of Thompson, Old Trail Lodge, two thousand three, limited for the concession stand at the Q R C C, administration?
Uh, as the memo leads, we've sent it to, uh, we had two applicants, um, um, to advertise those things publicly. We did review both of them, we ran into, uh, to give a follow-up comment last week. Um, and we're hoping that we can move forward, uh, getting concessions over, but it can't be.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Councillor, uh, Councillor MacArthur is moving, those in comments, thank you.
Um, I, I agree with this, and because like I said, I was there this weekend, it was crazy and we need that concession, and it's, there's so many people, even if it's just special event, if it's on a, just a regular weekend thing, we, you definitely need that. And even that.
Thank you, other counselors comments? Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, uh, quick question, did the council corporate ever declare this as a part of the, uh, his, uh, investment? Because this company is registered twenty years ago, so every year when we find our interests of the housing and business and all of this, this ever declare as a part of this.
Okay.
The city administration doesn't review those, so those are, uh, done on each individual's council's, both, they're put into an oval, there is no, any member of the public to review. So, uh, member of council, remember the public wants to come and see them, they can review it. I believe we just have to make a appointment to come and see, um, Tammy in my office to review those.
May I continue? The reason I pointed out, because this company is not new. It's been twenty years, so this is already registered twenty years ago. And when I look at the municipal act, conflicts of interest, four one A subsection one, four one A subsection two, four one A B, is all falling to this activity. Right, so if this company own more than five percent is for under the act four one A subsection one, so I don't know how we can say that it's not a conflict, in my opinion, and also probably is a fact. And, uh, with a good conscience, I cannot support this, and I would like to ask for a recordable, thank you.
Okay. Other, uh, Anthony.
Just for clarity, which section within this point, or subsection one?
Four one A subsection.
Four one eight, one two three.
Those sections deal with types of business penalties. Like forty one A?
Conflicts of interest, or?
Four, four point one eight.
Is not if Duncan, four point one eight? Duncan?
Four point one.
Four point one eight.
One point A and one, and two. Under the conflicts of interest. The way of.
Um, while we check that, will you have any more comments?
Counselor Oberdorfer, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, I just had a few questions regarding the, the lease agreement. Um, if we are to proceed in favor. Um. If the, I guess if the revenues, uh, a part of the agreement, um, as it states in the memo, is that there will be a contribution of fifty percent of the net profits, um, towards a new aquatic facility. Um, were there any projections, I guess, provided in the business plan that would state what that might look like in terms of what the contribution will be? Um, and is there at any point that we can revisit, uh, the lease agreement if we're not satisfied with what those net profits are and the contributions that are being made towards a new aquatic facility? So I don't, there was nothing identified in the. And then what about the lease agreement, unfortunately?
So I believe the way the lease is set up is that the individual who is doing this work, if it's awarded by council tonight, would then have to do monthly reports, I believe, to council, either quarterly or monthly reports on what their profits are and, uh, show, basically shoulder books to council on what the revenue being generated is in that lease sharing agreement or contract agreement.
Yeah, so I seen that in the agreement. Um, but I guess my question is if at a certain point council isn't satisfied with what those net profits are, do we have the ability to revisit that lease agreement? I know there's a termination clause in there, I mean, we could have that added. It's not current in this one.
Anything else further? Well, after other people speak, happy.
Um, sure, thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm, I'm definitely supporting this, I think that we've definitely done our due diligence as a city. Um, was checking with the, our legal department who has reviewed this lease, um, checking with um, our MSOs and AMM on different counselors that have come into agreements with, with, uh, mayor and council. So I have absolutely no problem. I, I'm confident that there is no conflict of interest as per Counselor Wong's comments. And I will be spreading this and I'm just looking Counselor Oberdorfer because it did say somewhere if there is a dispute in what we're thinking the amounts are that the audited, the auditor will step in, I did see that in there. I just can't find it, I'm sorry. Um, so I'm finding this as is, um, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Landmark.
Uh, I'm looking forward to speaking, but I helped out this weekend, volunteered vision, followed up, took some visits. And I've been to some other events where we didn't have anything, uh, available. Sure appreciate when this opens. Um, as to the conflict, I'm sure that, uh, as our MSOs and were viewed, um, if there is a conflict, you can fair, once it's declared, um, true, one, make sure that there's two things are separate. Where the council can vote on this. Uh, sort of talking to us, but it's a separate entity that's running this, so. And we're not exactly a small community, but I know what happens in lots of small communities, we're that tall. Where also the business owners and everything in the community, so we have to try to divide what you do and make sure that you're in their function. That won't you declare it and keep them separate. Thank you, I'll be.
Thank you.
Under the act that we're referring by the counselor, yes, it does lay out what the definitions are of an indirect pecuniary interest. And the counselor has already declared that. So it's really the section referred to is under municipal council conflict of interest act. It has been declared that counselor then it has to be noted, uh, per the, this act as well as our procedural by law. It'll be noted in the minutes. Um, the reason why is noted. And then that counselor under this act will have to fill out a new form disclosing all of their assets and interests. Should this be passed by council? So that is laid out in the act and it is with the following.
Okay. Um, can I ask a question? So if this goal, if it's gold trail interest is already declared in his assets, then that's sort of irrelevant, right? Because it's already been declared, yes.
Yeah, but they'd still have to declare what their business interests are. So there should still be.
I had a point, okay, thank you. Uh, who else on that? Counselor Trump.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah. Uh, let's do a little bit mathematics. The rent five hundred dollars a month, which gives the city six thousand dollars a year. Now, for the first candidate, the is one thousand five hundred, which will give us all.
I don't, I think this is only on this tonight. We've already talked in camera about the other two, so I don't think we can.
Okay.
This has already been brought forward like this.
Okay, so.
Yeah, sorry for that.
I see, Counselor Oberdorfer, do you have your hand? Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. Sorry, just another question or a clarification, I guess. Um. Regarding this, so my understanding is that the previous vendor that was in there was also renting for five hundred dollars, I think. Um, so I don't really feel like there's a change, I guess, in terms of the value of revenue we bring into the facility in that way. Um, I think it's great that there is a organization or individual, uh, that's looking for a creative way to support the aquatic facility. Um, and I'm happy to see that there is more support around the community and that people are looking for different ways that they can support it. Um, I think it's a unique agreement and one that, uh, is different to not just our community, probably to many municipalities, um, just sort of have almost like a cost or a revenue sharing type of agreement where part of the, um, rent generated is going to be coming from revenue and being contributed towards, uh, recreation or community. Um, so I think that's great and I'm really, uh, happy to see that happening. Um, I think it's good that we will be asking for the reporting. Um, again, my only concern is if at a certain point council isn't necessarily happy with the revenue that is being generated per se, which maybe will be an issue, but, um, just whether or not there's a way for us to opt out of that lease or to redo the, if we decide that we're not happy with the partnership in the way that it's working out. I know that there is termination clauses in there. Um, but I guess I didn't really feel like it necessarily spoke to those items specifically. Uh, but that's not enough for me to, uh, to be against the resolution tonight. I think that we do need that concession open and it's a great opportunity for a partnership. Um, so I look forward to seeing how it works out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Fitzpatrick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, I'm, so I'm supporting this because I, I feel we do need the concession open. I mean, it is, uh, community's been, uh, responding really well when it is open, run by volunteers. Uh, I think the city manager has done his due diligence and got legal opinion and, uh, I, I personally don't feel there's a conflict on this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Same notes, open the question and a recorded vote as per Counselor Wong. All those in favor? Counselor Oberdorfer, Counselor Landmark, Mayor Smith, Deputy Mayor Valentino, Counselor McKyver, Counselor Fitzpatrick, opposed. Counselor Wong, Counselor Trump, but is carried. Thank you. I would, just as a committee connected, just want to remind everybody, uh, when this case of one thirty, he, the TRCC is, uh, I guess, call for adjournment. We should call Counselor Holburn back before we adjourn.
We're not going to part for our waste.
Counselor, we can go for adjournment. Deputy Mayor Valentino, Counselor Wong, all those in favor? Harry.